Twenty twenty-two, five thirty P M. Molebridge City Hall is our regularly scheduled council meeting. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mount, Landrew.
Here.
Riker.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Chemnitz.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Um, next pledge of allegiance, I'll ask Councilman Kyle to lead us in.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next we have adopt the agenda. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections to the agenda, I'll look for a motion to adopt it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Riker.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Chemnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Okay, in your packet, uh, we've got two sets of minutes. Uh, first set of minutes, uh, from December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Chemnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Okay, the other set, uh, from December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, that was our special meeting. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections to those minutes, I'll look for a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen. Chemnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Riker.
Yes.
Okay, public forum and visitors, um, we do have one listed, but this is also for anyone wishes to address the councils, not on the agenda. But I'll let Ted go first, and if anyone else has anything, they can go after that, so Ted.
Thank you, I'm Ted Dickey with Northeast Council of Governments. For the council tonight, I, I have kind of a story we need to get into, and then I'll be asking the city to amend a couple of state water plan applications that they have into the state uh, already on water and wastewater issues. The state has roughly, uh, six hundred million that's being set aside right now through their American Rescue Plan Act. And they earmarked it for water and wastewater project, projects. Uh, right now, this six hundred million is guidelines, uh, or is set aside for water and wastewater, but these are guidelines at this point. The state legislature will need to look at it and approve it, and that should be done by the end of March or by the end of legislative session. These guidelines, uh, outline how communities can receive funding, uh, how much can be set aside for individual communities, and it's based on, on population. So in Molebridge's case, there, uh, according to twenty twenty census, three thousand four hundred and forty-four people in Molebridge, and because of the size of the community, uh, it's eligible for three thousand for each resident. So upwards of ten million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, uh, would be available of that six hundred million. Now, when I say that, that's just as a possibility, there's a lot of communities that are going to be competing for funding like this, and it will only pay for up to thirty percent of total project cost. So, having said that, it's not a set aside for Molebridge, it's how much is available if you choose to come in with more projects. If the city chooses to use the local money, the local A R P A money that was allocated to the city, which Heather, if my numbers are right, is roughly six hundred fifteen thousand.
Correct.
If you allocate that towards a project and indicate to the state, we're applying for such, such a dollar amount, but we're going to be using our local A R P A monies for that, they will match that dollar for dollar, uh, up and above that thirty percent level. So if we, say we have a project and the city's got a few of them that we have in the works here, uh, if you use, use that for water wastewater and utilize D A N R, they will match that dollar for dollar above that thirty percent figure that we used earlier. Having said that, I, there, we, the first step to get funding from the state is through, uh, getting placed on the state water plan, or the intended use plan, as the state also knows it has. The city is already under, uh, the state water plan for several wastewater and water projects on the wastewater side. It's replacing the existing screw pumps, the grit handling processes, rehabilitating the screening system, uh, items like that. There's also a need, and this is why we're looking at amending the, the wastewater side, uh, for a sledge removal in either purchasing another truck or a better truck to get the sledge so it moves more quickly and go further down the road, or purchasing a piece of property, uh, in order to place the sledge that's somewhat closer. The, I'm not throwing the engineer under the bus, but we need more time to figure out on the engineering best interest for the city to move forward with that. But we're, what I'm hoping the city does is amend the state water plan to include some sort of sledge removal, either system or piece of equipment. So that's what we're adding on to the state water plan, uh, tonight. The state water plan doesn't commit the city to moving forward with any projects. Again, it's just the first step that's needed to be done in order to put it on their intended use plan, so that when we come back for applications for funding, the state says, box marked, you're on the state water plan for this, and then we can move forward with funding at that point. Uh, on the water side of things, uh, we are already on the plan, uh, for making improvements to the water treatment plant and/or replacing it altogether, uh, repairing and replacing water intake system, and either raising the north water tower or putting in a booster pump up there in order to boost the, the or increase the water pressure for that. The engineer, uh, also felt that maybe we should add water lines in, so we're looking at amending the state water plan on that, on the water side to include some water systems. We don't have a cost estimate yet on, on either one, on the wastewater side, we're guesstimating about that three million dollar range for either the, a new truck or to, um, purchase a piece of land. It's a complete guesstimate at this time, it's the same on the water, we don't have an estimate yet. The engineer will get that, uh, so that we can, uh, put something in place prior to the February first deadline for state water plan. So, I don't have a lot of really good and solid information tonight, but what I do know is this is the right step to move forward, amending the state water plan on the wastewater side, adding in, um, either wastewater equipment in the form of a truck or purchase land, uh, in order to move the sledge, and on the water side, just adding the water lines in. So what I'm looking for tonight is, uh, a motion authorizing Heather to sign a state water plan prior to February first to get the state water plans amended, and, and so we have that set aside and ready to move. Moving forward, um, I would like to, uh, get applications started for the D A N R's April first deadline for actual funding applications. So we get, February first, we get the state water plan done, by April first, I want to have applications to the state for a water and/or wastewater project. The question that we will need to answer, not tonight, but sometime prior to probably your March meeting, is what project and/or projects those are going to be? Whether it be the north tower raising it, the water intake, which we're applying for brick funding through FEMA for, if we wanted to include that in an application. If we, you know, on the sledge removal side, getting a plan of action figured out, so we know what we're going to be doing with that, and any other, uh, wastewater, uh, treatment issues that need to be done. Heather and I will be working directly with the engineer and probably the committee, I assume, to hopefully have a good feeling how we're going to move, be moving forward with this, and get some good information out to the council, so that when we come back for your March meeting, we have a plan of action in place of how we want to move forward with something. Again, this is what I'm thinking, uh, the council obviously needs to say, hey, Ted, you're right, or Ted, you're way off base again. So, not looking for any active motions on that tonight, just providing information that, hey, this is what I think is, is a good course of action for the city moving forward and getting some, uh, projects moving on the water and the wastewater side for that. I've said a lot, does anybody have any questions? Any problems getting a motion to authorize, uh, Heather to sign amending the state water plans on the water and the wastewater to include both some, uh, water mains on the water side and the, on the wastewater, either a truck or piece of land or something to help alleviate the sledge removal.
Somebody got questions on that? Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to go ahead and authorize Heather to sign the amended plans as presented.
So moved.
I'll make that motion, second.
Call the roll, please.
Chemnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mount.
Yes.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Riker.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I just have, uh, one more piece of information to pass along. There is a sewer project that we've been working on, uh, to, like I said, replace the grit pumps and, and the, uh, the screw pumps as well at the sewer, uh, plant right now. That project is going to be going to bid, um, February second, I believe, if my memory serves me right.
Correct.
Um, so at your Feb- at your February eighth meeting.
Ninth.
Ninth, thank you. The city should be able to move forward with awarding that, hopefully if there's funding to cover it all. Yeah, award it contingent upon C D B G approval at that meeting. So, is there anything else the city would like me to look for at this point? Other projects to, to look for.
Kyle, you got a list?
Kyle always has a list.
I do. Anything, just the stuff that you have right now is pretty much currently available to us then?
This, this is the, the funding that's, the, the hot button issue right now is that six hundred million. We, we think that the, the state's legislature is going to approve it as is. We haven't heard any dissension or anything, but I, my level of, you know, input or my level of input is not important to the state.
Is there anything else down the pipe that you can see, or that there's some potential for some funding?
Uh, the, the state, the federal government has passed another one point two trillion of our member rate in funding that's going to be probably designated for water wastewater type projects and some other things, uh, dealing with, um, internet and maybe some transportation in that as well. That is probably at least six months, um, to maybe a year before we're going to be seeing how that fund is going to be allocated, where it's going to come through as far as which agencies, uh, and some final interim final rules as far as how it can be used. So, there's going to be more coming down, we just don't, we're not comfortable talking about it.
Fair. What I'd like to see, we've talked about it, Kurt and I have talked about it, Heather, and we've just kind of talked about it, is a lot of the wastewater lines in town, instead of waiting till they really get in tough shape, we should be lining them. And I don't know, I've been like a broken record saying this to get a study done, but there's definitely some problems around, we work in every community within a hundred miles of Molebridge. Redfield, Eureka, Roscoe, I mean, they're all doing water and sewer lines through, through C D B G and everything else. And I don't know, why wouldn't we get a set of plans and get a study done to see where we're at?
If you wanted to, we could also put wastewater lines on that state water plan and then, um, put in for funding, uh, by the April first deadline to, uh, clean and televise the lines. That would assist the engineer in figuring out which lines can be lined.
You know, and that's, and that's all Kurt's got, a couple of years of information. Now, they've been doing a good job with that, but if we wait too long, we might not be able to use that information if we wait too long. And I think there's quite a few streets that we could align instead of instead of dig up the streets and do everything else, we could align them, it'd be tremendous cost saving to the city if we kind of got on it. And at least got the study done. Because I think we do have a few problems out there. There you go.
How about funding? How about funding for like the parks? I know, what, three, four years ago, we were trying to get that sidewalks and everything tied in from the high school, like out to the baseball, you know, that complex?
Mm-hmm.
Remember that, we were working on that? Is there anything out there for that type of improvement?
Well, the, Molebridge was successful in applying last year for land and water conservation fund to do improvements to Memorial Park up there. That was to the field itself, if I remember right, Heather, and then there were some other aspects to that.
Playground equipment, pickleball, refinishing the tennis courts, basketball.
So, it, a- as far as sidewalks, there's a couple of different things that we can talk about there. The transportation alternative program through South Dakota Department of Transportation has, uh, what's known as safe routes to school, uh, funding, but it has to be for sidewalks that are leading to the school. If you're looking at a sidewalk replacement project out in residential residential areas, that's not going to work.
Right.
We also, years ago now, uh, tried to do a trail out to Revheim, um, utilizing that fund. And weren't successful back then for that.
I think that was part of this whole thing that we're talking about.
Yeah, we applied for that three times and got turned down every time.
So it's, it is competitive money for that. Game Fish and Parks also has recreational trail money. Again, same source of money, part of it comes down through, uh, Department of Transportation, some of it comes down through, uh, Game Fish and Parks. Game Fish and Parks doesn't have as much money, but it's the same, same funding source, we just need to apply for it if, if interested, and so if the city's looking at doing that, we'd probably need to update some cost estimates, figure out what you want to do, and just give us a heads up on that. Recreation trails, uh, just opened up here this week, uh, and I believe it's April thirtieth is the deadline for that, uh, for recreational trails, transportation alternatives, uh, July fifteenth is their initial step, which is a letter of intent, and then they come back in October fifteenth is the full application is when that one is due. But we need city to say, hey, we want to move forward with doing an application, we'll help you out with that.
Anything else?
I'll, I'll mention always a fire hall.
Okay.
He talks about it a little bit, but.
There is funding out there for, uh, construction of a new fire hall. That's through the Community Development Block Grant Program on the grant side, on the loan side, it's through U S D A Rural Development. The city currently has U S, or C D B G funds on the grant side allocated to do the sewer and so we need to wait until that sewer is getting a little bit closer to completion before applying for something else. Question I have is the city's priority, uh, the fire hall, or is it other wastewater, water improvement projects? Because we don't want more than one at
You can only have one per year or per project at a time?
They, there's no set rule, but they like to see a project being completed prior to
Before applying again.
For another one.
Any other sources for that?
On the grant side.
Fire hall, yeah, grant side.
U S, when you apply to U S D A for funds, uh, you're applying for both grant and loan, but we've only seen loan come down on the fire hall side. And that's usually what we do to pair those two together, uh, to get a fire hall project completed.
Anybody got anything else to add? All right. I think you hit about, what, fifteen, twenty million dollars worth, just.
More than that.
No problem, we can spend money all day, right?
All right, I don't think anyone has anything else, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will be moving forward, trying to, uh, come back prior to your, yeah, prior to your March meeting. Or get at the March meeting at the latest with an application to get the water and wastewater, get something moving on that end of things. Uh, if anything else you want us to move forward on, we need some sort of motion by the board to say, hey, we're, we're wanting to do these things. So.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Okay, hearing none, I'll move us into Department Head Reports, uh, up first, Water Department with Superintendent Kurt Schmalz.
Good evening.
Hello.
Uh, I'm looking to approve, uh, thirty-three cent per hour raise for Brady Fewer, uh, effective January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, anybody got any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve a thirty-three cent per hour raise effective January twenty-one.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mount.
Yes.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Riker.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Chemnitz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Kurt. Um, up next, Fire Department Chief Doug Delaroy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only thing I have tonight is the, approve the roster for twenty twenty-two, which should all been in your packet.
Okay, you got twenty-three?
I think so.
Is that my count?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Looking good.
Try it.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you. And we got, the new rescue tools are back, if you guys want to take a look at them after the meeting, so.
We were told not to touch them, they're expensive.
If you can break them, we'll get them replaced.
Okay, okay. All right, well, if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the roster.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Chemnitz.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Riker.
Yes.
Landrew.
Yeah.
Mount.
Yes.
Okay, up next we have zoning with, uh, Jackie Ross Turn.
Hi, good evening, um, December is starting to slow down, but we're still seeing things happening in town. Uh, forty-two thousand dollars, three permits were granted, one was demo, which has been changed, the house would be being moved off the property instead of being demoed, so that's kind of a nice thing, so it's going to have a flip on that. Annual report. Number, it's in the packet, number of permits issued in twenty twenty-one was a hundred and six. Temporary permits, two, extension permits were only two, and demo permits were just twelve. Total dollar value was one, one million, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-six, excuse me. So, we are doing good, if there's any questions, there's a list of commercial permits that were given to, uh, commercial people doing things around finance products, so a lot of improvements.
Okay. Questions for Jackie? All right. Okay. Next, um, under zoning, there is a rezoning appeal. Is that what you're here for? Okay, if you guys want to come on up.
I'm Grant Oxner, uh, bought Ron's repair in town here, I'm sure you guys know of it, uh, turned it into River's Edge Repair. Uh, it's general commercial right now, and I'm trying to go to highway commercial. For a few different reasons, one of them being, uh, tire shops are supposed to be highway commercial. Uh, Ron's been running a tire shop for thirty years, I think. One of my main reasons was so it's a legit business, um, I can continue to do tires. That's going to be a big moneymaker for me and help the citizens of Molebridge, I would assume, everybody's pretty backed up right now. Um, another reason I want to do this was, uh, Al Bully has a few cars, uh, at J and M right now, that he's going to move to, to my lot if I can get approved. Um, it's, it'd be about anywhere from four to ten cars max, uh, don't want a bunch of stuff up there. I think that, that is one of my main reasons, though, and the reason that, uh, I think it might have got denied uh, and had to come to an appeal here is, there's a little misunderstanding with, with, uh, what I wanted to do, and I didn't, wasn't able to make that meeting, um, because I had to go to work in Oklahoma. So, it was rescheduled for when I was at work, so I wasn't able to find anybody reputable to, to be here for me. Mainly, if you guys have any questions for me.
What part of Oklahoma, just being nosy?
Uh, Calumet, right next to Oklahoma City.
Okay. Um, hmm.
I, I, can I step in on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had the same problem when I was building the car wash, I had to switch mine over, which I could have built a slaughtering plant there, but I couldn't build a car wash. And, and I think if he's on the highway and it's commercial property, he should have it, that's my opinion. I don't think he should have to reapply, when you buy a commercial property and it's right on Highway twelve, it should be highway, highway commercial. It'd be different if it was blocked down the street when you're in the residential, but it's not. And you know, when I did mine, they gave me, I mean, a two-page list of what I could do there, but I couldn't do a car wash.
Did we change the zoning on yours, or did we?
I have a special hearing allowed, but I don't think you should have to, I think you should be able to have what you can do what you want to, as long as it's kept up and looks neat, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to do it. That's my opinion.
Well, because I, I, when I read through here, so either Ron's repair was so either Ron's repair is violating an ordinance for thirty years, or a zoning ordinance, and no one either caught it or, or changed the permitted uses.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay, um, I mean, my, my only caution to the council is, you know, once we start changing these zonings, they're changed forever. You know, we got, the zoning is put in there for, you know, for, for reasons. You know, and we did that once before, and I, you know, that was part of your, I'm just going to read your letter here, um, where you had talked about, um, you know, the other individuals are no longer in business.
Yep.
Okay. My viewpoint on that is those, and those individuals are no longer in business.
Yes, sir.
But that zoning is still, is, is now changed.
Yes, sir.
So I don't like to, you know, like Kyle said, you know, you start to make, well, next thing you know, somebody's going to come put in a slaughterhouse if we change the zoning. I mean, maybe not to a highway commercial, but, so that's, that's my, my thoughts on zoning. Anybody else on the council have anything?
I, I think because of this location and you're on Highway twelve and you buy commercial property, you should be able to do what you need to do. If it's blocked down the street in a residential area, I think there's, there's caution there, but when you buy something right on Highway twelve, for instance, in that list, Price says he can build a slaughterhouse, but he can't change a tire, but yet, they've been changing tires there for thirty years. I think, I agree with you, but if, if changing makes sense in this, in this particular situation, I think it makes sense to change it.
My question is, are you going to sell cars here?
Yes.
Okay.
Maximum of ten.
My problem is like if you have junker cars and you just let them sit there and they don't get sold, as far as having all that stuff on commercial property like that, because we've had issues with this before. You know, they say they're going to put a dealership in and nothing, nothing comes of it, and we got a bunch of ten cars sitting there.
Well.
And we got to maintain consistency too.
Yes, yes, sir. My lot is not big enough to have, I, I don't want to be, uh, I don't want to look like that, you know? I understand you, you guys don't know me, but I, I won't let it be like that. Uh, I don't even have the room to have that kind of stuff. I thought about going into towing eventually down the road, um, and I, I'm not even looking at having those vehicles there. There's just no room, you know? There isn't much room as it is now to even work on things that I have. There isn't much room as it is now to even work on things that I have, so.
And see, the scary part about towing is junk gets hauled up and.
Yes, sir.
It's a whole nightmare.
Yes, sir, and I don't plan on having any of that there, at all, so. You're, you're basically going off a trust of somebody you don't know, I understand that, but.
Well, e- e- even if I, I don't know him, which I don't, I, I still feel that if it's zoned commercial, it's right on Highway twelve, you should be able to run a commercial business out of it.
That's why we have the permitted uses on the, on your highway, highway commercial and general commercial. Randy, you got something?
I just, I kinda agree with Kyle, you know, I mean.
Is it possible that we can have a definition of this general commercial and highway commercial presented to us? Can somebody explain that to us so we can?
Jackie's standing there with her book.
If you could do that for us?
Yes.
So we can be refreshed and know what we're doing?
I can do that. General Commercial District, Statement of Purpose, the intent of a general commercial district is to provide a commercial area that, for those establishments providing the general shopping needs of a trade area or, in a particular, those build businesses naturally orientated to pedestrians shoppers. The grouping of users in a tent to strengthen the central business area as the urban center of trade, service governmental cultural activities, and to provide neighborhood commercial convenience areas. Is that. Going off of what Grant's doing and that stuff, his business is able to be there as running as it is. And that's it, there's no problems with changing tires, changing oil, anything like that, he can operate that part of it, with absolutely no problem being in the general commercial. The problem is, is our dealerships are just on highway commercial. Grant, one of Grant's, um, there is stipulations, um, of how many vehicles he can have on his lot, being in general commercial, for auto, um, auto repair services. He's only allowed ten, ten cars per a thousand square feet of property. So that's something else that we need to take in consideration. Highway commercial, okay, you did a definition on that. Statement of purpose intended to provide local locations for types of business which are not compatible with those which are characteristics of the general commercial district, but which are central in serving the total needs of both urban and rural population. It is intended that such districts to be located at or near major thoroughfare intersections, on highway service catering to motorists, farmers, and ranchers. So there's a little bit of difference on that, um, the permitted uses, again, they can have, um, kinda broadens it up for, lodging and car dealerships, so bigger areas.
Well, I, I, you're confusing a little bit of a car dealership versus a used car license, anybody can go to the state and get a used car license, right?
Correct.
Right, so, he's not having a dealership, he can get a used car license, sell two cars there, that doesn't contend with the dealership.
Um, under, well, under highway commercial, thirteen oh, dash oh-two permitted uses retail service of used merchandise and the re- retail sale of new and used motor vehicles, trucks, boats, motorcycles, 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 uh, car rental implement and garden supplies. That's where he's having problems, that part is not a permitted use in general commercial.
So if you can't sell that kinda, and I, I'm not on you, Jackie, if you have any question, no, just in this council, so, if I can't sell a car on Highway twelve, in Morbidge, South Dakota, where do I sell one then?
You can't, it's just.
Different section of.
That's, that's exactly my point. You're not, you're on Highway twelve, you should be able to be highway commercial. I think if you're three blocks down the street in the middle of a neighborhood, I don't think you should be able to. When you're right on the thoroughfare, I think you should be able to.
So you're saying they should be able to have a, I mean, I sell used cars, well, I don't sell them, but people park their own private vehicles on my spot and sell them.
Same with ours.
Okay, so I guess, but I'm looking at that different as someone engaged in the business of selling cars. I think that's what you wanna do, is be engaged in the business of selling cars. Which, which doesn't matter what.
Well, it, it, it's, it's part of having a shop, putting tires on, you find a car, you fix it up, and you sell it, when you're slow time, it's just part of the business.
But also, at the end of the day, like I said, Kyle, once we change that zoning, it's, it's gone.
But you're, you're changing for this property, not the whole.
Correct.
Not the whole thing, just this property.
But then you've got the surrounding, you know, that are still there, so.
I believe Lucky's is highway commercial, right?
Yeah, that's a block, a block and a half, right in here?
Right across the street, technically.
How many cars could fit on this property, if, if, you know what I mean?
Um, I don't, not gonna have more than ten, I don't know if ten's gonna work, if it doesn't look right, if it looks too congested, I'm gonna reevaluate, you know, I'm not gonna make it look,
That's the only thing that, that's the only thing that concerns me, is you know, we have enough stuff sitting around Grant now with, you know, right? I just really don't wanna see it get out of hand. You know, I mean.
Jackie, by law, how many cars can be on there, I mean, how many, if, if this was zoned, rezoned, I mean, on that piece of property, square footage wise, how many cars could be on that lot?
If it was rezoned to highway, there is no limit.
There's no limit?
No. General commercial, there is, there's, there's standards, there's stipulations that he has to abide by because of the repair shop. And that's how, what is, what if we figure, twelve thousand square feet of the building?
The building is probably fourteen.
About fourteen, so he's only gonna be allowed ten vehicles on there for his repair shop. For customers, and that's what he's allowed to, because of the size of his building. My opinion, um, take it or leave it, I guess, maybe it's, it's something that we need to look at, the council needs to look at, so maybe moving, or making a movement to move something from, like, used car, car dealerships to give these younger guys a chance to actually be able to start up doing something in general commercial with. How many cars can happen in going that way, instead of doing it while rezoning or down the line if something happens?
Well, my thing.
You still have that.
My thing, too, is if you have cars, ten cars, running or non-running, are they working, are they not working? That's what I'm worried about, too, I could put ten cars, or if all ten cars don't work, you can call the dealership, but none of those cars work, so they're not saleable, unless you're selling a, you're a junkyard or scrapyard.
And that's where you can put your guidelines in, and, uh, they have to be, um, for him, for like Grant's stipulations and that stuff that he has to abide by, he can have a customer's vehicle on his lot for four to five days. If it's not picked up, paid for, then he can go through his legal, uh, council that he can go through and get that title and resell that vehicle.
You kinda have a, a plan in, in place, I know you're, you're new, but if something like this were to happen, like you ended up with, like, say you're working on cars, but you gotta wait thirty days to get a part, or, but then you also, you got your ten out here, you're trying to sell, but then you also got ten sitting out back. I mean, that could really, you have kind of a plan in place to go somewhere with them, or to try to not keep it so congested?
Well, I don't plan on getting ahead of myself, um, I pick my jobs, things that I am very capable of doing. So they're in and out type of jobs, you know?
Right.
Changes tires, brakes.
Yeah.
The big ones, I keep, I'm gonna keep it to a minimum, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, 'cause I got money wrapped up in a car, I'm not gonna get paid anyway, you know? And I usually check for parts before I even start working on it, uh, it's just a good, good thing to do, I don't, I don't plan on having things sitting there for, for too long, you know?
So anyway, the question before us is, do we change the zoning or not, based on the appeal? Or, can you amend the ordinance?
Talking about, for instance, you know, Jackie said ten cars, so that's ten cars total, customers' cars, cars for sale, licensed vehicles, you can't have a bunch of towed vehicles in there, I mean, is it ten, is ten, ten total? Or is it five, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think what you're talking about and what Jackie's talking about is we'd have to go back and readdress the permitted uses in that ordinance. So, that would probably be something zoning guys could dive into.
You know, and in the, in some of the people's defense of asking the questions, we did get stung a few times with a bunch of cars right on Highway twelve packed in there, and they weren't gonna do it either, I'm not saying you would, but I understand that he is concerned, the mayor's concerned about cars, too.
So the question before us is, do we overturn zoning, or, or do we uphold zoning?
Can you amend just this deal? Does it have to be standard for everybody, it's every the same, you just can't take this deal and amend it?
That's what he's kind of asking, just by taking those two lots and rezoning them.
I'm talking about amending, like you can only say, you can only have ten cars at any one time.
He did, this particular piece doesn't qualify for like a conditional use permit or anything.
So if you guys wanna, like I said, that's the, the question, is we either deny this appeal and uphold zoning board, or we overturn the appeal, we change the zoning.
Can we throw it back to the zoning board?
No, it's, this either lives or dies tonight, but taking Jackie, that's the way I look at it in the legal process, it's either gonna live or die tonight. And then, if Jackie, Kyle, and then zoning committee based on what's talked now, if you guys wanna look at changing the permitted uses on that whole, five or ten cars, or whatever you think you're gonna do, but that also sets the standard for every highway commercial and general commercial lot down the highway. So. That's the way I interpret everything here.
So, if we, we, if we don't pass this, you can still do your whole operation, you won't be able to sell cars there?
Yeah, I, my understanding I read in here that you can't do tires, though, you can do anything automotive repair, but you cannot do tires.
I do think that, um, the permitted uses of what's under general commercial and under highway commercial, they do need to be looked at, there are some things that, they're repetitive, and they also conflict with each other, what's allowed in one place and what's allowed in the other. I don't necessarily feel that it is best to change the zoning of this property, but I do think that we need to address what is allowed in this type of zoning. Because, for example, you, you change this zoning, you change it for forever. Grant's not gonna own this property for forever, so we change it to highway commercial, how do we know that the next person that comes in and buys that property isn't gonna come and try and put a junkyard right there? So it's, it's not just an issue of what Grant is going to do with it, it's what's going to be done with it after Grant is done with it as well.
So, so some of the confusion maybe is that he can't even change tires there right now, or sell tires, how do we fix that piece of it and address the car selling after that? How do we do that? I, I agree with Jade, too.
Cause, well, here's one example of, like, conflicting information, that general commercial district, um, permitted uses, letter, um, line P, gasoline service station, but then you go to highway commercial district and permitted uses, A, gasoline service station and automobile repair garages, C, tire store sales and services including, I don't know what that is, involving no manufacturing on the premises, and then down, um, on line O, vehicle repair business. So what's the difference between a vehicle repair business and automobile repair business? I feel like there's, we need to clarify what we actually mean by these lines, and why is, why, what is the reasoning behind requiring a hu- highway commercial district in order to have a tire store? So, I think that's, that's where we need to fix this, because intentions are not always what actually comes out of it. You don't intend to have more than s- six cars for sale, but what if, there's, oh, I have one more, so, well, I guess this time we'll have seven, well, then next time, I have one more, well, this time we're gonna have eight. And then it just, it progressively gets more out of hand.
Yes.
And, and I feel like it's allowing, I don't have a problem with allowing a small used car lot there. I think that we do need to have different types of car sales lots, like, for example, you're not, you're not gonna be able to put as many cars in your lot as Beatles is. You're not the same scale, so, maybe we need to figure out a way to put under general commercial, a small used car lot with no more than six vehicles for sale at, at a time, or eight vehicles, or whatever the case may be. I just don't think that the answer is to change this from general commercial to highway commercial.
So, how do we fix the tire thing, then, if he's gonna sell and fix tires, how do we fix that?
The tire thing actually, going through, like Jade said, there's things that come, there's the, um, on different things, but repair services related to goods and merchandise permitted to be sold in this, in this district, it's a general commercial, you're a highway commercial. Tires are under that district, it's for your crew, pedestrians coming through, and that's something that you have to prepare done. So you're gonna be replacing tires, so you're.
Selling them, too.
Yeah, you're selling them as you're repairing them, so that's where that kinda falls under your general commercial. So, for him doing his tires, oil changes and that stuff, he's okay to do that.
So technically. Technically, he's not violating it, but it looks, it, but when you read through it, it, it can seem like it because the tire store is listed under highway commercial, so you're not violating it, but we need to make it clear that you're not violating it, so, like, and that's where, again, where we need to move the permitted uses from one section to another.
Because you're doing a lot of other stuff, it's not like you're Northwest Tire, where all you do is tires, you're doing a general amount of lots of other stuff in your repair business, tires is one of them, I would think, and that's all your description of your, what you do, you know?
Tire, tires more.
Tires and probably maybe an oil change or two.
Well, I believe it's been cleared up that he's, um, okay to do tires, I said the big burning question is, can he sell used cars?
Yep.
According to Jackie, right now, the big burning question for him to sell cars is to change that zoning, which, that's forever.
Well, I have two things to add to that, um, my. Well, I have two things to add to that. Um, my, my case might be unique. I have a really little lot. It's not gonna be able to even be turned into a junkyard, you know?
You'd be surprised.
I've been a Moberge resident almost all my life. I'm not gonna let it get to that. I'm not just some new guy.
So if you can operate your business as is without the car sales, whatever, for now until we went through, I think Jade makes a really good point, and we need to clean those up so it's more clear.
Yeah.
We just want to do the, the car piece of it right now, and you do the other piece, you'd be good with that?
Yes, uh.
See, and give us time to, to fix this.
Right, you're gonna give the reins for that to the whole, everybody with general commercial though, you know?
And that's why we need, we need to address the have the stipulations there so that it's not just everybody can have as many things as they want on that lot. And so that's why, I mean, and there's, there's gonna be different ways of fixing this, adding it to a per- a permitted use or adding it to the conditional use, so it is tied to being able to be used that way for that particular owner. It's, there's gonna be many ways that we can fix this. It's just I don't think that changing the zoning is the correct answer. Because there, there are lots of issues with this that, you know, you make a valid point of this is saying I can do it, but this is saying I can't. So because of this, we're gonna get that fixed. And it will be fixed for everybody from now on.
I think at the end of the day, we need to try to do what we can do to help him be successful. You know, I mean, he's young, he's starting out. So that's my opinion.
Grant, will you have cars on this or will it just be, uh, Mr. Bowley?
I'm just probably him for right now.
Okay.
He's gonna probably do his own thing on a different lot eventually, and I might not even have cars there at all.
Okay.
But, uh, it's gonna be reassurance for me to be able to do it too, I guess. But right now, he's gonna give me lot rent money that's gonna get me home to get out of the oil field.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So financially, this is gonna be huge for me, because I'm trying to get home to be with my kids and stuff, so.
There's not much in Calumet, Oklahoma.
No, sir.
I've been there. Um, all right, so if we don't take any action, the zoning boards ruling stands. So is that the direction I'm hearing?
I would, I would like to stand by the, the zoning board's determination, but the uses need, need to be addressed as soon as possible so that you know, he, he can operate the business. I am all for startup businesses. My husband has a startup business and it's hard. It is hard and kudos to you for purchasing that property as a startup business. That's, that's very impressive. And I do wanna see you be successful in this, but, um, I do, I do not wanna see the zoning changed.
So an ordinance change takes roughly two to three months when we go down this process, just so you know.
That means, I mean, you will be able to operate your business. There just won't, you just won't be able to do the car sales or have Al's cars there until we can get this addressed.
Anything else? Do we need a motion? Okay, I guess if we need a motion, I'll look for a motion at this time to uphold, uh, zoning board's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
No.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Okay, motion carried.
I'm already skeptical to get it fixed.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, I agree.
Jade's right, it is very awful lap so bad, you're really not sure what you're doing.
All right, up next, approve mayor appointment of Denise. Is it Centeno or Centanio?
Sure, no, first one.
Centeno, okay. Uh, to the zoning board, um, till term ending May twenty twenty-three. There's no questions or comments. I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Okay, unfinished business, second reading of ordinance, uh, one zero zero four redistricting. Um, we passed the first reading, that leaves all the words the same based on census information. There's no questions or comments. I'll look for a motion to um, approve, second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, new business, uh, public hearing and approval of resolution twenty-one dash zero three vacate an alley. Um, is that you?
Yep.
Okay.
Hello, uh, James Prasek. I am the owner of Hard Rock Resources LLC. Uh, I purchased the, uh, building, uh, known as Hills Feed Seed down by the railroad tracks here. Um, I purchased the building and the triangle shaped block that runs through there. I'm looking to, uh, vacate the alley that runs, uh, north and south through the middle of that, that block.
How come?
Uh, I'd like to demolish the building that's there and put up a building for storage of equipment that I have sitting there.
Okay, so your building's actually gonna go
That's what I'd like to have.
In the space.
Uh, or across the alley, then more of the middle of the block.
Be more centralized on the property.
Yes.
Isn't there something in the middle of the alley now? What should be the alley?
Oh, the, the, a lot of, everything I still have there is all cleaned up.
Okay.
A pantry or that was.
Okay.
The one thing, the alley isn't continuous all the way through either.
No.
So it's, you know what I mean? It's just a little spurth.
Exactly.
And your zone light industrial down there, I believe is
Uh, I one, yes, uh, industrial one, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, are there any questions or comments on that? Anyone else to speak for or against? That's a public hearing, so, uh, well, I guess hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero three.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next, uh, designate official depositories for twenty twenty-two. Uh, they're in your packet. Looks like it's Dakota Bank, Great Western Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust. So if there's no comments, I'll look for a motion to approve official depositories.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Okay, up next, designate the Moberge Tribune as the official newspaper for twenty twenty-two. Uh, if there's any questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the Moberge Tribune as our official newspaper.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mount?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, up next, authorize electronic or early payments for twenty twenty-two. Um, looks like there's a big list in your packet. I'm not gonna read them all off. But if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Landru?
Yeah.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mount?
Yes.
Okay, up next, set election date and approve joint election with the school. Uh, looks like Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two will be the election date. So if there's no questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the election date and the contract for having a joint election with the school.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mount?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Okay, up next, approve contract with code enforcement specialists. Um, that's Joel. Um, did anything change in this other, same dollar, same mileage, same everything?
Yeah, same amount.
Okay. Um, if there's no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to approve, um, another year contract with code enforcement specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mount?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Reiker?
Yes.
Okay, up next, um, approve resolution twenty-two dash zero one, the salary resolution. Um, that's the big list in your packet with what everyone makes. Um, we do this by law every year, so if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the salary resolution twenty-two dash zero one.
So moved, second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mount?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Hey, approve resolution twenty-two dash zero two establishing a city attorney. Um, looks like it will be Bant, Goshen, Kramer LLC at a rate of two hundred and forty dollars per hour. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mount?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Okay, up next, uh, looks like we have a cemetery deed, so I'll look for a motion to approve the cemetery deed transfer.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Excuse me, uh, discussion information, um, audit acceptance letter. Did you wanna talk on that Heather, or we just wanna know that we're accepting the audit?
We're accepting the audit.
Okay.
Um, it's on the website if, if the public would like to view it. If anybody has any questions, please come to me. I believe I also emailed out the audit to the council. Yeah.
Okay. Um, next up is payment of the bills. Looks like there were some additions um, on your places before the meeting tonight. Anyway, the bill total, three hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred ninety-one and sixty-nine cents. So if there's no questions on the bills, I'll look for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us to adjournment, so if there's nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Landru?
Yeah.
Mount?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kim Nitz?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you.